Good morning, everyone. I would like to thank everybody for attending today. We will go ahead and call the Lake County Planning Commission meetings scheduled for June 23, 2022 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get on to our timed items, we will handle the consideration of the adoption of Assembly Bill 361, findings authorizing teleconference meetings during a state of emergency. Any discussion amongst the commissioners before we make a motion and a decision?
I think that we should continue the same previously adopted recommendations from the board.
Just to keep what was previously approved in place for now?
Yes.
That sounds good to me. Second?
So, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to keep those findings the same. We also need approval from the May 12, 2022, hearing and the May 26, 2022 Planning Commission meetings. Just need approval on those minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as drafted for both dates.
I second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for approval of the minutes. We have a few moments to kill before our first timed item. We will go ahead and bring, this is the time for citizens' input. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on anything that is not an agenda item today, this would be your time. Jake, are there any hands in the Zoom room for citizens' input?
No, at this time, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
We will leave citizens' input just kind of open on the floor for a moment before we I'm going to officially close citizens' input and move on to our first agenda item. Time for 9:05. This is a continuance from April 28, 2022, Public Hearing on Consideration of Major Use Permit UP 19-42 and a mitigated negative declaration 19-61. The applicant, Bottle Rock Farms FJA Trust, is proposing two acres of medicinal commercial cannabis canopy area and two acres of adult-use commercial cannabis canopy for a total of four acres of outdoor canopy area. The project includes one 4,750-square-foot processing building and a 1,000-square-foot immature plant area. The project is located at 9,900 and 10030 Bottle Rock Road, Clearlake, California, and further described as APNs 001-057-22 and 001-057-23. Staff, it has been brought to my attention that there's a request for a continuance on this item?
Yes.
Your mic's not on. I can hear you, but your mic's not on. Sam, can we work on Andrew's mic?
Okay.
Try it.
All right.
There you are.
Yes, I can elaborate on that request. The initial continuance was due to concerns about piecemealing the project and the appropriate environmental review. While that has been addressed, our Building Division has determined that the applicants need to obtain the appropriate grading permits. And while this was happening, we became aware to staff that there was another request for tribal consultation with the Big Valley Band of Pomo, which has been scheduled for July 5. So, our initial request would have been to continue to July 14, but due to the request for tribal consultation, I believe we are requesting a continuance to July 28.
Correct. Okay, so a date certain on that. And the applicant was notified and they're aware of it?
Yes, the applicant was aware.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion or anything, since we're not going to have the staff report presented?
I move to continue item number one to July 28, 2022.
Second. Okay. All in favor of the continuance until July 28, 2022? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries for a continuance until July 28, 2022. We have a few moments in between. I'm showing a time of 9:07 before we take up our timed 9:10 item.
They all started coming in Friday, Saturday, Sunday, mostly Monte Cristo. The community, there's a, yeah, and we had to include those as well. Well, at least for the first one, Emerald Mountain had the agency review for the other two because so many comments were coming in. And our assistant planner put in all the agency and public comments together to be green-shirted because they needed.
The agencies were commenting outside of the IS.
I believe those comments were received within the IS.
So, they weren't last minute?
They were not last minute. The agency comments were all received prior to Mayor Clayvon put them in with the public comments that were coming in in the last minute. We were trying to put them together in a single document and kept getting that document finished. More just kept coming in.
So, the point of green shirt, I understand, was the last minute comments not included?
Yeah. The agency comments were incorporated.
Okay. So, that cleared, that's on the record, that's been cleared, the first and last minute comments from agencies that hadn't been considered for the two today.
Okay.
Yes. Time for 9:10. It's a Public Hearing on Consideration of Major Use Permit UP 20-47 in that a determination has been made that this project required a mitigated negative declaration to consider the adoption of initial study IS 20-59. The applicant, Emerald Mountain Farms Incorporated, Norman Graham, is proposing two A-type-three outdoor cultivation licenses with a total canopy area of 67,562 square feet and A-type-13 distributor, transfer-only, self-distribution license. The proposed project is located at 1850 Augulyn Canyon Road, Clearlake, California, 95422, further described as APNs 010-053-03 and 010-011-01.
Legal notice has been determined on this matter.
Thank you, Jim. And Byron and Sam, have we, do we have our staff report ready to go?
I'm ready to go. I'm not sure if it's.
You're ready to go? Okay, I think if you, if, Jake, can you confirm that his screen is shared?
Yep, I see the presentation on Zoom right now.
All right, excellent. Byron, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Byron Turner, presenting this project. As you stated, major use permit 20-47, Emerald Mountain Farms, located at 1850 Augulyn Canyon Road, near the city of Clearlake. So, again, the permit request is for two Type A, Type III outdoor cultivation licenses and one Type 13 self-distribution license on a parcel of 117 acres total. The zoning of the property is rural lands with a combining district of waterway. It is within the Shoreline Communities planning area, and parcels within the vicinity are also zoned rural lands as well as some open space. This is within Supervisor District 2, approximately 1.5 miles from Highway 53 and 2.7 miles northeast of the city of Clearlake, the parcel. It is within the shoreline watershed. Also, it's in the sub-basin of the Burns Valley watershed. We'll talk a little about that later. But there, within the shoreline watershed, there are seven other approved projects with 18.41 acres of canopy as well as 12 pending projects. The application for these two Type A, Type III licenses will increase, if approved, 1.23 acres of canopy. The project's scope, it's 68,562 square feet of canopy and cultivation area within five actually distinct areas on the site ranging from 2,300 square feet to 34,000 square feet. There's an existing residence on the site. Also located on the site is a wooden shed, compost area, security center, pesticide and chemical storage area that meets all setbacks and building code requirements, as well as six-foot-tall screening fence. As you can see, the site is proposed to be the above-ground pot type, so no ground disturbance. There are nine 5,000-gallon water storage tanks on site. There's a man-made off-stream pond as well as a water storage reservoir. There's, it's an existing groundwater well with an estimated yield of 50 gallons per minute, and the expected total use of water is expected to be 5.6 acre-feet a year. The site consists of a series of hills bisected by Black Eye Canyon with elevations from 1,500 to approximately 1,800 square, 1,800 feet above sea level. It is within blue oak woodland, however, there are no, there will be no removal of trees as a result of this project. And like I said earlier, it's in the Burns Valley frontal Clearlake watershed, which is the sub-basin of the shoreline watershed. Access is from Augulyn Canyon Road. There are unnamed intermittent, there is an unnamed Class II water course on site and two existing culverted ephemeral Class III water course crossings. All cultivation is set back appropriately from the top of any water body, which begins with 100 feet. Review for compliance with this project was the Lake County General Plan, the Shoreline Communities Area Plan, the zoning ordinance as it relates to zoning as well as cannabis, and all state regulations. The Lake County General Plan, again, it's the Rural Lands General Plan designation. There's no conflicting policies in the general plan and no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation in the general plan. Very similar with the Shoreline Communities Plan, we've got a couple of policies that do support commercial agriculture and commercial cannabis. However, the Shoreline Communities Plan predates the legalization of cannabis, so there really isn't a whole lot in the, in the plan to, there's nothing that conflicts. Zoning ordinance was reviewed as well. Article 27, uses generally permitted, Article 7, rural lands, and Article 37, the Waterway Combining District. Just a little analysis on the Waterway Combining District. The cultivation areas meet all setbacks. This project was analyzed under CEQA. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for it. It identified impacts and all impacts that can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. The document was circulated from March 23 to April 21, 2022. Aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources, geology and soils, wildfire hazards, hydrology, water quality, and noise were all found to be able to be mitigated due to less significant impacts. With regard to public notification, this was noticed at 725 square, 725 feet from the property boundary. So, you can see the properties that were noticed based on the county code. Staff recommendate, recommendations are that the Commission adopt mitigated negative declaration, initial study 20-59, and the major use permit, USP 20-47, with the findings and conditions. I'm available for questions, as is the project applicant and the applicant's advocate.
Thank you so much for your presentation, Byron. Commissioners, do you have any questions right now before we open it up for public comment or any discussion with staff before we open it up for public comment? Okay. So, that being said, we will go ahead and open public comment. This will give anybody a chance to speak in regards to this agenda item. And I do believe there's green sheets at the podium. If you could please fill those out. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Norman Graham, from Emerald Mountain Farms. Want to say thank you all for your time here today, give us this opportunity. This has been an amazing journey getting here, and we're really excited to go forward and be able to contribute to this community and help everybody that we're planning to Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for filling that out, and thank you for your comment.
Good morning. I just wanted to take a.
I just need your first and last name.
Oh, sorry. Danielle Fontno.
Thank you.
I'm with Emerald Mountain Farms. And yeah, I just kind of wanted to take a moment to introduce myself and thank you guys for everything and being here today. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Trey Sherrill. I am an advocate for Emerald Mountain Farms, and I just wanted to make one point of clarification. Yes, most of the cultivation areas are located in the frontal Clearlake Burns Valley watershed. However, the groundwater well that supplies or will supply water to this site is actually located in the Grizzly Creek North Fork Cache Creek watershed. The project site sits along the watershed boundary there. Just wanted to make that point of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Whatever works for you.
Hi, my name is Dave Hughes, and I live, I have a home at 2705 Old Highway 53, which is in the Burns Valley watershed. And I represent about 40 neighbors who have banded together to try to protect their water. The last time I spoke to the Commission was via Zoom. There were four commissioners present, and that was on the 2050-21-22 Augulyn Canyon project. Thousands of dollars, and seven months later, our appeal was upheld by the Board of Supervisors. And then I noticed, all of a sudden, here we have another application on Augulyn Canyon. I do have a quick question. I heard that we are kind of legalizing a grow that already exists. Maybe he got an early grow permit. I'm not sure what the, I mean, is there growing ongoing now at the site?
Leave the site, it was a site that had early activation.
Okay. And again, it's not, go ahead.
Andrew, can you confirm?
Yeah, I've been to the site recently, and I was going to expand upon the presentation with some details here soon, but there is not currently cultivation on the site.
There is not?
There is not.
Okay, cool. I wanted to hand out a couple of things real quick, and I'm trying to keep this short. But I have, I want to make sure that the Commission is aware of the Burns Valley watershed, where it goes, and the number of applications, the number of applications in the Augulyn Canyon area. There's two pages on each one. Basically, this map shows the Burns Valley watershed. It extends on both sides of Highway 53, almost a Highway 20. It's replenished with rainwater primarily. There's no subsurface that we're aware of. One thing I noted in their hydrology report, there's no mention of the aquifers in the Burns Valley basin, although he did just mention their well is not apparently in the Burns Valley basin. There are, most of the wells in the Burns Valley area that I represent are probably 60 to 80 feet. I know there's one down from me that's 125 feet. The ag wells go down much deeper, 250, 300 feet, and produce more water. It's our feeling that the fact that the basin is recharged with rainwater means the water hits the surface and makes its way down into our basin and then into the lower basin. And our feeling is that if there's too much pumping, especially during a drought, if there's too much pumping, it will affect the volume of water we have available to us as residents. That was one of our contentions on the appeal on the 2050 project, and we think it's relevant. I did send the hydrology report to our hydrologist. We spent over $5,000 on the appeal with a hydrologist, and he was not able to get back to me with any suggestions at this point. I also wanted to reiterate cumulative impacts, maybe changes resulted from a single project or a number of separate projects. The cumulative impact for several projects is the change in the environment, which results from the incremental impact of the project when added to other closely related past, present, reasonably foreseeable, probable, future projects. So, we don't think at 2050, they did an adequate cumulative impact analysis. We don't think this one necessarily has either, although again, if we can show that it's not going to affect the Burns Valley basin, we obviously don't have as much of a concern. Again, I wanted to point out on this map, we also showed a couple of vineyards. There are vineyards in that area also, but all these blue lines are either approved or pending cannabis grows in the Augulyn Canyon area. A couple of them are in the city limits. So, I wanted to make sure you saw the magnitude of that neighborhood and what's going on. In conversation with Scott Brown, he owns Caltech Pump. He's familiar with that area. He mentioned that a well can work as a conduit to actually allow water to flow from one aquifer to the other. The top 20 feet of a well is sealed. The bore is usually wider than, you might have an eight-inch bore with a four-inch pipe going down, and after the first 20 feet of concrete, it's all gravelly. So, that can work as a conduit to, let's say, transport water from the upper aquifer to the lower aquifer. So, again, we're concerned about the effect of that on our aquifer. With all that said, there are a couple of things I wanted to, if I can find it real quick.
Before you move on to something else, may I ask you a couple of questions about that?
Sure.
Your map here shows a lot of, a lot of projects, and I believe the map that we just saw on the screen showed one or two, maybe three in the area. So, I'm wondering if one of the staff can confirm or?
Yes, our records have five projects, three approved, two pending, but then there was the appealed item that was denied. I believe what we're seeing here with this and what we're going to continue to see with other projects, and maybe it's part of a greater discussion, is the amount of illegal cannabis cultivation throughout the area and the confusion between legal and illegal cannabis cultivation.
Thank you.
Just for reference, I received the list from the county, an Excel spreadsheet. There are 480 applications for cannabis use in Lake County. 480. That does not include the city of Lakeport or the city of Clearlake. And they're in various states. Some have been denied, some have been approved, and some are pending like this one. Those, as far as I know, they're all legal, legally, they're either permitted or pending. All those, I don't know where the illegal ones are. I understand there are a couple in Augulyn Canyon, but I didn't identify them because I don't know for sure where they are. In our, in our appeal, the findings of facts, I wanted to read it real quick. Matthew Earnshaw, who was our hydrogeologist and water resources consultant, he provided testimony to the board, and he said that the evaluation of cumulative impacts to nearby wells is not adequately addressed, and the pump testing is inadequate. He feels that the pump testing that he's seen done, including this one, are too short. He's mentioned to me as much as 48 to 72 hours of pump testing. Then you really get an idea of what the, what the well is using and what the capacity Potential, the potential issue existed in regard to the evaluation of this project in terms of cumulative impacts, given the other cannabis cultivation sites in the area, and I think that's relevant to this. Evaluation of cumulative impacts conducted on behalf of the project acumen did not consider the proposed project along with the groundwater demands of nearby projects and other reasonably foreseeable projects in the area that could contribute cumulative impacts. And I think that kind of applies here. I don't think they went far enough in their cumulative impact part of the hydrology report. Long-duration pumping tests with corresponding groundwater elevation measurements did not appear to have been performed, and that's where I go back to talking about maybe a 72-hour. Then I wanted to point out, in the hydrology report itself, the limitations on page 11. Groundwater systems of Lake County are typically complex, and available data rarely allows for more than general assessment of groundwater conditions and delineation of aquifers. A lot of the data that we have is outdated. Some of it goes back to like '76, even before that, and there's no real monitoring program going on, which by the way, we are trying to start in conjunction with the county. This analysis is based on limited available data and relies significantly on interpretation of data from disparate sources of disparate quality. It should be noted that hydrological assessments are inherently limited in the sense that conclusions are drawn and recommendations developed from information obtained from limited research and site evaluation. Additionally, the passage of time may result in a change of environmental characteristics at this site and surrounding property. So, even in the hydrology report, they admit, you know, there are limitations. The information can be old, it changes. One of the things we're trying to do, we've gotten with the county, we're working with Supervisor Sabatier to get into doing more monitoring. Some of the property owners have volunteered to. Some of the property owners have volunteered to be part of the county. They would probably only monitor the wells twice a year, probably in the spring and in the summer, just to determine what it is. But in the meantime, individual property owners in the Burns Valley area are going to be doing, maybe every other month, they're actually hiring Caltech Pump as an example, to monitor their well consistently. And a lot of us are trying to get into doing that. I wish, I wish my hydrogeologists had had an opportunity to comment on the, at least the hydrology portion. I don't know where the applicant is in relation to starting to try to grow. I was kind of hoping we might get some kind of a delay to talk about, maybe through staff, through our hydrogeologist. I know there's another hydrogeologist we could contact to see if there's some kind of a condition. We can add that, I guess, brings them into some kind of monitoring. I mean, okay, they're supposed to put a, measure their water. Well, what if they don't turn it on and turn on their well? You can't hire enough people to make sure everybody that has a permit is doing what they're supposed to be doing. And even with the, well, there was a recent group of articles in the Santa Rosa paper and they talked about illegal grower and up to 75% of what he grows, he does not report to the state because he can't make any money doing it legally. So again, you know, I don't know how you hire enough people to monitor everything that should be monitored, but if we could have a more intense local monitoring of the Burns Valley watershed at least, I was hoping we could even see some kind of a temporary moratorium on any kind of ag use until the drought's over. And in the meantime, work on some form of monitoring that we can do to help protect our water in the Burns Valley. So I'll leave it at that. Hope I didn't get too carried away.
If I can ask a couple of questions. First of all, we do have a condition of approval. The production well shall have continuous water level monitors, just so you know that.
I did see that.
Yeah, my, my understanding, and maybe the applicant can answer this. My, my understanding is that their well is on the border and drawing from a different aquifer than your folks' wells. Can you, can someone speak to that?
I know, he mentioned it earlier and again, I have no idea. I do know that the property, if you look at the purple and then you look at a more intense close-up map, it is on the cusp, it is on the border where the well sits in relation to someone that puts a purple map on a piece of paper.
Yeah, I don't have the hydrology report in front of me, unfortunately. But let me just understand, your, the 40 people you're representing today are mostly on individual wells?
Yes, they are all on individual wells.
All right, thank you.
In Burns Valley.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Trey Sherrill, the applicant's advocate. I just wanted to address some of the comments, the previous commenter and questions the previous commenter mentioned. First of all, he mentioned 480 projects, cannabis applications. Can, do you think you could elaborate on that?
Well, yeah, I wanted to respond also to the map that he presented with the parcels. I think one thing that could be a cause of some confusion is the fact that there's clustering of parcels in projects. So while there may be something in the 400 range of parcels, staff is currently looking at 111 approved projects and 129 pending projects. As far as denied projects or withdrawn applications from the past, I don't have those figures with me. I do know that this project alone has two parcels and one of them is not highlighted on the, on the map that the public commenter presented.
And then about the Burns Valley, I'm just reading this from the Lake County groundwater management plan. And it's, there are three different, three different aquifers within the Burns Valley management unit. The, so yes, their, their well is in a different watershed. It is not in the Clearlake frontal watershed. Their well is in the Cache Creek, Grizzly Creek watershed. However, their aquifer spans both, aquifers, groundwater, they don't, you know, it's, but as, as the previous presenter or commenter mentioned, especially up here in the, in the lower lake formation where the Emerald Mountain Farms area is, groundwater recharge comes mostly from precipitation. And so that, that would, that would kind of conform to, to those official waters, those watersheds, even though the aquifer itself would span both watersheds. And then I would, there's, as I was saying, there's, there's three different water bearing formations in the, in the Burns Valley watershed. There's a quaternary alluvium basin, that's a shallow unconfined aquifer. There are quaternary terrace deposits, which can be both superficial and they could have a confining layer. And then there is a lower lake formation, which is where Emerald Mountain Farms, this is, this is the areas surrounding the actual valley of Burns Valley are underlaid by the lower lake formation, which consists of alluvium and terrace deposits, consisting of fine sand silt, thick interbeds of marble and limestone. It can be up to 200 feet thick with low permeability and provides water to wells at up to a few hundred gallons per minute. That's just from the, once again, that's from the Lake County groundwater management plan. And, oh, I did want to mention, yes, you called it, there, we would be doing well monitoring as a condition of approval. And finally, the neighbor who has, whose groundwater well is, whose domestic well is closest to Emerald Mountain Farms property in their well, she had concerns and my clients, you know, they're, they're neighbors, so they went and they were talking. She had concerns that somehow water, using their well wouldn't impact hers. So at the cost to my clients, and she had actually had, he mentioned Caltech earlier. She had her well serviced last year by Caltech and we had a water level monitor. I don't remember what month it was in, but we had a water level for her well then. And then we did the test again after, so it was earlier this year. And then we ran a test. A, the water in her, the water level in her well was higher than it was the previous year when Caltech serviced it. And then B, when we ran the test, we pumped it for eight hours straight and we monitored the water level in both wells at the same time. And the water level in her well did not move at all. And while, you know, obviously as we're pumping Emerald Mountain Farms well, the water level dropped and then it rebounded after we turned it off. But that was just to try to see if there was any direct connectivity between her, you know, the closest nearby well and the applicant's well.
Can you, do you remember what the well depth, where they were drawing from was?
I'm sorry, I don't have that on right this second. I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, I left my notes on the kitchen table, unfortunately. But my, my concern obviously is I'm looking at the elevation of this project and I just want the numbers clear in my head. Where, where is your?
Oh, are you asking about the depth of the applicant's wall?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I can get you that.
260 feet.
And then what's the surface elevation?
Do you have the surface elevation?
They should know it is.
Approximately, the surface elevation of the well is approximately 1,800 feet. Give or take 40 feet.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions that I may be able to?
Sure, I have a question. So you said that you guys did a well test this year? On the report, I have the well test was done in January of 2021 at 30 gallons per minute. Is that the same as this year?
No, this was a test just specifically, so that the test you're referring to was, was done for the hydrology study. The test I'm referring to is, once public notice came out for the CQ review of the initial study, of course, the neighbor received that notice and then became concerned. But she had a great, my, my clients and the neighbor have a great relationship. And so they're like, you know, hey, why don't we, why don't we test this? And it's like, so they, they did, they ran a 10 hour, I mean, eight hour pump test. They pumped the well at, I believe, 30 gallons a minute. And, I'm sorry?
The applicant's well?
Yes, they pumped, Emerald Mountain Farms pumped their well at 30 gallons a minute and they.
And the neighbor at the same time, to see, right?
Exactly, to see if there was any connectivity and the water level in her well did not drop at all.
And the neighboring well, closest, the depth on that was, was what?
I can give you that.
Because we've had projects where the wells are way, way deeper, so they're in almost completely different to where they can pump a lot, a lot of water and then it won't affect neighboring wells. But I'm just wondering, at this close proximity, if they are similar in depth or?
It's, yeah, 170 feet deep, so they are similar in depth. And they are both located on the same ridge, but, and that was, you know, kind of the reason for her concern. And, and we wanted to, A, we wanted to know if there was direct hydrologic connectivity. And then B, if there isn't, wanted to allay her concerns so that she wasn't here today saying they're going to impact my well, you know, truthfully.
Yeah. So what I'm seeing, and this is more of a comment, is I, somewhere in here I saw, we're talking about 50 gallons per minute for the growing season, right?
No, ma'am, I believe we're talking about 30 gallons per minute for, I can, I have to look at the number of hours per day.
Is that the capacity, well?
That's the ability. The well has the ability, if it had a pump larger, it could, when it was drilled, it could produce 55 gallons a minute. But the current pump that there is limited about 30 gallons a minute.
Yeah, I think you're going to need 50 gallons per minute, but that's just an opinion. What I'm seeing is I don't think this is a significant amount of water. I mean, this, we're talking about an acre and a half.
I agree, you know, compared to some of the other projects in the area, this is a relatively small project. And I did just find at the, the peak anticipated daily demand for water is approximately 9,800 gallons per day, which at 30 gallons per minute, the well would have to be pumped for a little less than five and a half hours to meet that demand.
I do think that Mr. Hughes brought up a really good point though, and that's the cumulative impacts of all the wells in the area on the humidity toward the lake. You guys have any comments about it?
I'm still, I'm listening to what you were saying and the applicant, as well as the, the public comments. And just knowing, you know, just trying to focus on what we have at hand versus what's coming down the pipeline in the future. But, you know, yeah, I don't have any comments.
I think there's some interesting, there's, there's some really, we need to be looking at these things in a, in a broader way. I think Mr. Hughes is right, but thank you very much. You answered all the questions that I can.
Thank you. Is there any other one else wishing to speak on this item before we, you know, kind of start to, to choose, repeat? People would like to comment. Anyone in chambers? Jake, is there anyone in the Zoom room who would like to speak?
Yes, I do have one hand raised in the Zoom room. The hand I have up is from Richard Durham, I believe. Richard, I've given you permission to speak. It looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Richard Durham. Cannabis consultant and, a cultivation consultant and cannabis grower and a Realtor. I've been out to this project. It's very modest with over 100 acres. They're eligible to do five acres of canopy. They've been very modest with it. They're under two acres. It's at the end of a road. All the odors will head east, so there's, it won't impact anybody. It's been very meticulously planned out. I was very impressed. I don't see this impacting anybody. And I'm hoping that it's been a very long time for this project to be done. They haven't skipped a beat. And I think it would be behoove the county to have them. They seem to be very good players. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jake, any other hands in the Zoom room?
At this time, there are no other hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. I do have public comments still open, so if you would.
In the, Dave Hughes again, in the packet, there's a letter from that neighbor. Kat Christine Sunquist, and I actually called her yesterday. She made a comment in her last paragraph that she was concerned, you know, the final area of comment is water usage. By the way, she was concerned about road and I didn't really look at the conditions for road maintenance. The final area of comment is water usage condition of my well, especially during a severe drought. And this was April 20th. An impromptu test to measure the current depth of the water in my well was performed Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. The test showed the water level had increased over the winter from the test performed last October. There are plans to perform tests at the beginning of the season and repeat every two months. So again, I've asked her if she'd like to participate in our monitoring and I think she indicated she would. I just wanted to point that out. I know there's a lot of addresses, but each parcel has a different address. But the blue lines, like this is two parcels, this is three parcels. So I did try to delineate some of the addresses or multiple addresses on certain projects. And I forgot to mention one thing in the water usage part of the hydrology report. Cannabis has often been characterized as a high water use plant and it goes into cite some things. And cannabis plants can consume approx, up to approximately six gallons per minute, or per plant per day, whereas grapes can consume three and a half gallons per plant per day. Then he mentions requirements for cannabis plants are similar to those of other agricultural crops, such as corn and hops. What I find interesting there is I saw another hydrology study that says hops uses a lot more water than cannabis does. So again, we go back to conflicting information. And I do have that hydrology report here, but it's specifically because the appeal property that we did had a hops farm on it. And they emphasized, oh, the cannabis is going to use a lot less hops. And here's a report saying it uses the same amount as hops. So which is it? Again, just, just some conflicting information that concerns us. You know, if it's outside of the Burns Valley watershed, we probably don't have a big problem with it because it may not impact us, but we're not totally convinced that it is. And maybe again, some more time to study this, look at it, come up with a condition to, to help us so we don't have to file another appeal and spend thousands of more dollars would be appreciated. Thank you.
So Mr. Hughes, you're asking for a continuance? Is that what you'd like to see here today?
Well, I did kind of mention it earlier. If the commission felt that would help, give us an opportunity to maybe, I mean, the applicant is representative, seemed pretty willing to discuss things open. I mean, I think he's being upfront and honest about everything. Maybe to just give us time to come up with something that helps satisfy the neighborhood that is, again, especially during the drought, that we're not going to be adversely impacted to the, and we have properties that are having water problems now. So, I mean, I put a water storage tank in my house last year. I hadn't really experienced anything yet, but I just thought it was the prudent thing to do. So anyway, I, if you felt a continuance could help, we'd be more than happy to meet with the, with the applicant, give us some time. I might be able to get our hydrologist involved a little bit. Again, it's just coming up with some condition that kind of helps us protect our water.
Thank you very much. And just about the water consumption, I'm very familiar with the hops that were there. They were friends of mine. I felt that they were pretty similar to grapes, actually. But the, the numbers that we're using, I mean, this is, not a lot of research has been done on cannabis. So I understand that it's kind of nebulous, but it seems like everyone's using the six gallons per day, per plant number. And that's coming from, you know, the other counties that are much more humid than us. So I suspect that actually they use a lot more than that. But if this, what I'm looking at is the well capacity.
Right.
So they're not going to be pumping more than 55 gallons. But thank you.
If anyone else, the public comment is still open, so if you'd like to come speak, just please be. please be sure to state your first and last name.
Hi, my name's Randy Wilk, and I have a very quick comment. We have a 1,200-year mega drought right now. And I don't think we, this is a new precedent, and we need to take this into consideration. And I don't see it being taken into consideration as a contingency plan. We need all the water we can get for viable sources. The lake is a half a foot down by this point. It should be normal. People are struggling just to get water out of the lake, the water districts, for example. And then the other thing that's involved here, we're not, we're comparing apples to oranges when we're talking about plants. For one thing, if you're talking about an established vineyard, that takes a lot less water than planting a new harvest, a new crop. That's much different. And the other thing is, they're talking about staggering harvests, meaning planting in multiple times over a two or three month period for, and then taking water. And then on top of it, I can't get a clear answer, is it 450 plants per acre or 2,000 plants per acre? That's my comment. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you for your comment. Public comment is still open if anyone wishes to speak before we bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Jake, is there anybody in the Zoom room?
At this time, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you.
I had a question for the applicant. In the report, stated that the project would reduce the estimated water usage here from estimated from 1,825,000 gallons to 2,542,000 gallons, reduced to 1,642. So that's only like a $250,000, $250,000 gallon reduction. How, are you guys going to be planting less? Or what's your plan for reducing that in drought period?
Trey Sherrill, advocate for the applicant, Ramon Farms. Yeah, and the way to get a reduction in water usage is to reduce the cultivation area by 10%, therefore resulting in a 10%, reduction in estimated water usage. I do want to address a comment previously made, and this is an outdoor cannabis farm, all planting of the actual canopy areas would occur in June, and there would be no additional planting. It would be a, you know, it's, there's one harvest, one planting, one round per year situation here. And, you know, true irrigation would not begin until June, true planting would not begin until June, although, you know, some immature plant cultivation may occur prior to that, starting in April.
Thank you. Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Good morning, Olga Martin-Steele. I just have a question. One of the speakers mentioned that there were 400, a list of about 480 cannabis cultivation requests somehow in the queue. I did not hear a staff response as to the accuracy of that list, if it exists, and can we access it? And the reason that, to me, this is very important, is this idea that we're looking at these projects on a project-by-project basis because I know they're in front of you and they come up in the queue that way. This is a huge, huge issue. And I'm aware of no other form of ag, and I know cannabis is not considered ag and all that, that has that many projects in the queue at one time. This is a huge issue, and I think dealing with it the way that we are on a case-by-case basis is very wrong-headed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I do believe we did have a little clarification on the 480 applications. Andrew, will you touch on that one more time?
I can respond and kind of repeat what I'd said. I think the confusion might be between parcel numbers. We currently have 111 approved projects that we are overseeing. We will start annual inspections for those approved projects, including well monitoring and water use in mid-July, which will go on through mid-September. And the last I checked, I believe we have 128 pending projects. We do keep these on a master spreadsheet. I share them with the public whenever requested. I believe some members in the Clear Lake Oaks area, Holly Harris particularly, I send it to her on a regular basis. I'd be happy to send it to you as well.
Thank you for the clarification, Andrew.
My work is spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you. If, for those of you who didn't hear, David Hughes said that the list that he was referring to was provided from the county, correct? Okay. So public comment is still open. I'm going to take one last glance around the room to see if anybody wants to speak, check in with Jake to see if there's any hands raised.
There are no hands in the Zoom room.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for some discussion.
I'd like to hear what Andrew has to say.
Hi, Andrew.
Do want to, you know, mention a few things for clarification. While it's reflected in the staff report, the conditions and the site plans, I think there was some aspects from the presentation that were from the original proposal. The project has been scaled back. There were concerns that staff had about tree removal, particularly blue oaks on the property. We had a meeting with the applicant, and I followed up with a site visit and a discussion, and they decided to remove 15,000 square feet of cultivation and have no further tree removal. There will be some minimal ground disturbance, that I understand, and we received requests for tribal consultation concerning that ground disturbance. Since then, that was on June 1st, that we had our first meeting, and I followed up with a site visit with tribal representative on June 3rd, and then agreement has been put in place and a condition has been added to that a monitor will be there for any ground disturbance. So I just wanted to add that to the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez?
Well, I don't believe that we need to move this item. I think that what we've heard today with the water usage was enough to move this project or to continue forward with this project and approve it today.
Commissioner Fields, how do you feel?
Well, I really appreciate the input from the public, Mr. Hughes especially. I do, I do have some concerns, and I do think that we should be looking at the cumulative effects of all these little projects. However, this applicant has downsized the project and has been working closely with staff, and I just can't justify denying it at this point.
Yeah, and I also agree with cumulative impacts and monitoring. We've had this discussion before about doing so, and I believe that's what the department is moving forward to, so that we can understand exactly how many projects are in a certain area, how much water usage, and especially when you have neighbors with these concerns to be able to, to let them know that, that there is an impact or that there is no impact or a little impact. But I think just seeing, being able to see the data and collecting that data is going to help us for future projects. So this is a, is not a really big project that we're looking at here. And we do see that the applicants are talking with the neighbors and assuring that, that their voices are heard in the water monitoring. So I am ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to discuss a little bit more. Yes, cumulative impacts are going to be something that I feel we will start to see and maybe start to require at some point. The scale of this project, sure, it's not, it's not a large scale. It's not 10, 20, 30, 40 acres. However, I, I want to look at this case by case, but definitely if there's any way that we could, just kind of like the way that the applicant contacted the other neighbor, gave her a peace of mind, you know, ran the, the well test at the same time. I feel like with a little bit of communication, maybe a condition to, you know, appease the surrounding, or the committee, if you will, to just confirm that they're in different aquifers and that there won't be any, anything moving forward. I can guarantee that if there's, if there's other projects coming up in this basin or in the surrounding area, we might see the same person here still fighting for, you know, the people that, that it's going to be impacting. So I don't want to turn a blind eye to that, really. But I do, I do feel like there's, there's a common ground here and that we can definitely make something work. I'm kind of, I'm stuck. Maybe a little bit of clarification on what would make the cumulative impact and how far out we go. I mean, we're opening a floodgate, for lack of a better explanation. And so, help me out.
Well, I think that what we're seeing here is kind of above our heads because it's the board of supervisors that makes decisions about ordinances. And in this particular case, you know, I don't, I don't think that we can ask for more from a property owner. They've been cooperative, and I think we're all aware there are a lot of people who are not trying to get legal. And I think that we have to, we have to listen to the property owners who are trying to do the right thing and work with them. So these are difficult decisions. That's just all there is to it.
I agree. And, you know, it's, it's not, it's not an.
Madam Chair.
Yes, hi.
Sorry. I just wanted to clarify that your commission does have authority to consider the impacts of existing uses in the area. It isn't necessarily a requirement that the uses you consider be legal uses. You can look at the impact to the particular resource that you're, that is being evaluated, and whether or not, and you could, and you have the authority to weigh that in relation to the findings that you have to make. So if in your deliberation, you make the determination with the facts presented to you today, that, that the, just by example, since we've been using it, that the well or the water source to which, from which the well draws cannot adequately provide for all of the uses in the area that you have presented evidence, been presented evidence for, then you could make the determination that, that you could not make the findings that are necessary to approve the permit. But that is an analysis that your commission would have to make with the evidence that's presented to you by staff, by commenters, by, by public speakers, and the evidence in its entirety and the record in its entirety as presented to you today. But you can, you can evaluate those impacts.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Did you have any further discussion? Okay.
I move that the planning commission find that the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-54, prepared for by Emerald Farms, Emerald Mountain Farms, Inc., for the property located at 1850 Ogulyn Canyon Road, Clear Lake, further described as APNs 010-053-03 and 010-011-01 will not have significant effect on the environment, and therefore a determination of a mitigated negative declaration with the accompanying mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 23rd, 2022.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I further move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-47, applied for by Emerald Mountain Farms, Inc., for the property located at 1850 Ogulyn Canyon Road, Clear Lake, further described as APNs 010-053-03 and 010-011-01 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance with the amended site plan, and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated June 23rd, 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay, we are going to move on to our item number three. It's our timed item for 9/15. It's public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 21-06, in that a determination has been made that this project required a mitigated negative declaration to consider the adoption of, and to adoption of initial study IS 21-06. The applicant, Awkwaba LLC, is proposing a major use permit to A Type 3 medium outdoor licenses with a total combined outdoor canopy area of 73,560 square feet and, and in canopy area of, I apologize, and a A Type 2B small mixed light license with a total combined mixed light canopy area of 9,720 square feet. The project is located at 11795 North Drive, Clear Lake Park, California, and further described as APNs 010-019-15 and 010-019-10.
And legal notice has been determined on this matter.
Thank you, Jim. Byron, are you going to be presenting this one as well?
I'll be presenting this one as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, as everything you just read into the record is accurate and correct, so I will jump right into it. This is a major use permit for commercial cannabis cultivation to A Type 3 outdoor cultivation licenses and one A Type 2B mixed light. The parcel is an 88.66 acre parcel. The zoning is rural lands with some scenic combining district and a special lot size density of B5 as well as rural residential B5. The general plan identifies it as rural lands. It is also within the shoreline communities planning area, and parcels within the vicinity are also zone RL, RR, rural residential, and SR, suburban reserve. Supervisory District 2, it's approximately 1,500 feet west of the, 1,500 feet west of the city of Clear Lake, approximately 2.66 miles from Highway 20, and within the Lake County Fire Protection District. It's within the shoreline watershed. We, as discussed previously, there are seven approved projects within the area and 12 pending projects. This would add 1.9 acres of canopy. Public notification, this map shows the distance that the public was noticing. You can see the county did catch all the smaller parcels along the shore, all the smaller parcels along the shoreline. Because it's over five acres, the county goes to 700 feet, actually usually goes to 725, just to make sure when we have large parcels. This is a phased project. The first phase is one acre of outdoor canopy and 9,720 square feet of mixed light canopy. The second phase would be an additional 30,000 square feet of outdoor canopy totaling the 85,240. There are three fence cultivation, three distinct fence cultivation areas located on the site. Also on the site, there is a 1,800 square foot metal barn, septic tank, four, 5,000 gallon water storage tanks, a compost area. There are buffers around the, there's Conacti Manzanita on the site, so they've established 50-foot buffers around those trees as well as six-foot tall screen fencing. The project is served by a groundwater well that is drilled to a depth of 660 feet. The estimated yield of the well, not necessarily the water usage, but the yield of the well is up to 80 gallons per minute. The expected use for Phase 1 is 795,000 gallons per year with an additional, when you add Phase 2, you get to almost 1.3. The irrigation systems use PVC piping, black polytubing, and drip tape lines to conserve water. This is located along the spine of the sulfur bank ridge. It is, characterized as a blue oak woodland, and as there stated, you know, the project has morphed over time, there will be no tree removal, no oak woodland removal of the site, at the site. The nearest residential dwelling is over 1,000 feet away from any cultivation area and over 1,500 feet away from the city of Clear Lake boundaries. Access is from North Drive and Crestview Drive. No water courses or other surface waters of water are located on site. No water courses or other surface waters of water are located on site. The general plan, the shoreline communities area plan, the zoning ordinance, the state regulations were all analyzed. There were no conflicting policies found in any of those documents, any of those guidance documents. It meets the appropriate setbacks for the scenic combining district. It was circulated under CEQA for a mitigated native declaration. The comment period was March 24th to April 22nd. The mitigation measures have been incorporated as conditions of approval. Those mitigation measures included mitigations for aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, and hydrology and water quality. It is staff recommendation that the commission adopt mitigated native declaration, initial study 21-06, and approve the use permit 21-06 with the findings found in the staff report and conditions of approval. I will leave for questions as is the project consultant.
What's the elevation of the cultivation site above the lake level, above Ramsey?
The applicant might have that information quicker than I now, but I'm looking at the staff report.
Eight, zero?
1,800.
1,800.
1,800 is the elevation. I don't, the, what is the elevation of the lake?
So the, the elevation of the lake is 1,350, right? So this well is going to be drawing from below lake level? If it's 600 feet deep, 660 feet, feet deep.
Site is 1,800 feet above, okay.
1,800 minus 1,350. Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant or for staff before we open it up for public comment?
Sure. Is, where's the applicant?
I believe the consultant is here.
So it says there's an existing metal barn. I believe there was some pictures on the report. When was that built?
Hello, Trey Sherrill, and I'm here on behalf of Awkwaba LLC. The applicant is sorry that they could not be here, but they, they are currently sick with COVID and didn't want to expose anyone naturally. And, and so I'll be speaking on their behalf today. The barn was built in 2021 and it had a building permit associated with that and, yeah.
Okay. I think that was it for now. Or we had this letter come in, a public comment from
We were not sure who it's from. Do you know who it's from, the letter?
There was a name on the, Barb, Barbaria Pol, Poli.
Is it on a green sheet?
It was a green sheet, yeah. For item number, it should be on. Well, it was regarding surveying and moving fences and getting a surveying and something like that. I was just wondering how that interaction went.
So Andrew may even be able to answer this better than I.
Yeah, I can speak to that and I have a letter from our county surveyor.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was my concern as well.
So there is a neighbor concerned about the location of the fence on the property line. The fence, I believe, was placed within the property is my understanding, and the applicant had issues with people trespassing on the property, especially around 4th of July where people wanted to get up on the ridge and see fireworks and stuff like that. But, you know, concerns about trespassing in general. And they moved the fence to the property line with, I guess, under the direction of a survey that they had completed. However, to the, I guess, integrity of that survey, our county surveyor, Michael Mueller, wrote, "The Department of Consumer Affairs Licensing Board for Surveyors and Engineers, known as the Board of Professional Engineers, Land Surveyors, and Geologists, took action to revoke the license that allowed Mr. Copsy, Registered Civil Engineer, Number 26920, to practice land surveying in the state of California. That case is published as Case Number 1235-A and went into effect on October 31st, 2021. Some of the records of surveys then being prepared by Mr. Copsy were not completed when the board action went into effect. Those surveys were no longer able to be reviewed and corrected by Mr. Copsy, so they were not able to be completed. However, because those surveys had been submitted for review to the county prior to the revocation of Mr. Copsy's license, these maps had to be filed in conformance with state law and the direction of the BPELSG, which is the Board of Professional Engineers, Land Surveyors, and Geologists. Those surveys, which were unable to be completed, had a note added onto them in handwriting by the county surveyor's office, which said the following. 'County Surveyor's Notes: This map is being filed in compliance with state law. Alternate boundary locations may exist. A complete review was not able to be completed due to Case Number 1235-A.' These incomplete surveys are filed in Book 100 of Record Surveys at the following pages: 27+28, 29+30, 35, 36, 37, 39, and 42. None of these maps should be relied upon as a typical record of survey, as they were deemed incomplete due to the inability of the Mr. Copsy to comply with any required correction that would have been needed to bring them into technical correctness. They represent the opinion of someone who is unable to legally practice land surveying. No county decision should be made which relies on the information contained on these maps. If at all possible, please request or require that a new, correct survey is completed by someone licensed to practice land surveying." From Michael A. Mueller, County Surveyor, Department of Public Works, County of Lake. With that in mind, I did submit and updated conditions of approval. I'm really concerned with the security fencing. You know, the, the project description mentions security fencing around the cultivation area itself. The cultivation area is located well within any setbacks that are required. It's in the center of the property. I just want to make sure that that, that security fence is just around the cultivation area and the fence on the perimeter of the property is not supposed to serve as the security fence. Concerning that fence and the location and the neighbors' concerns, it's my understanding that's a civil issue between them and it does not affect the project.
If I may, the fence, the fence that is along the perimeter of the parcel is for keeping livestock on the property. It's not the security fence for the cultivation area. And also, I would like to make a correction. I pulled up the county GIS and the project site is at approximately 1,890 feet of elevation. And then I guess I could find out the elevation of the lake here.
1,189?
1,890 approximately.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah, so it's still more than 100 feet below lake level, looks like.
Commissioners, if I may? The project report cites that this, this particular development and we are on item three. Yes. That this particular project will be developed in two distinct phases and there is also comment from agencies regarding the status of phasing. And this may be another circumstance in which staff can clarify whether or not this is, this project will, will actually be in two distinct phases or if this is another misuse of the word phase and then what they truly intend to use is stages. If this is in fact a phased project, I'll remind you, your commission I'm sure remembers that the CEQA requires that the project, as much as applicable, can be evaluated in its entirety as both phases and that anything that cannot be evaluated now would need to return for further CEQA evaluation later in the future phases.
Thank you. And is there confirmation that it's in phases or stages? Byron? Staff?
I'm going to refer to the initial study, but I do believe that the entire project was reviewed as part of the initial study.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
So stages as it
So yes, yeah, as, as based on my understanding, then it sounds like stage is the appropriate word now, phase.
Thank you. Public comment is open, so if anybody has any, anything to say on this agenda item, feel free to speak. Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room?
At this time, no, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chavez, did Andrew answer your question about the survey?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it looked like it wouldn't necessarily affect the project since it's all in the center of the property, so we wouldn't have any setback issues. But would that be cleared or are you guys getting a new surveyor? Just to be able to get, or I mean, even if that's just between neighbors and whatnot?
Yes, sir. My client's already hired a new surveyor to go out there and pick up and try to finalize this record of survey as well as if, if necessary, root, move the, the livestock fences as well if, if in fact there was an error made by the previous surveyor.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one other issue that I think we should mention here. The last few pages of our green sheets here refer to some communication with the State Clearinghouse and apparently the wrong attachments were sent or something. Was that ever resolved?
Yes, that, that issue was resolved. The previous project that we just reviewed, Emerald Mountain, was uploaded at the same time as this project. The, basically the cookies on the browser that I was using at the time went straight to the last file path. So, well, yes, it was saying site plans and property management plan. It was for another project. They noted that within a few days, actually, it was, it was about a week and a half that went by. So it came to my attention. I worked with the State Clearinghouse to resolve the issue. We reposted the item and we reset the 30-day period for review.
Thank you. Still doing public comment?
Public comment's still open.
So in the new report presented today, so there will be no more tree removal needed anymore?
That's correct.
So therefore the 30-acre no-development zone is out of the picture or would that still be implemented? Not no more?
The 30-acre no-development zone was intended as part of the mitigations for removal of, I believe, a dozen oak trees. However, we reduced the scope of the project. It was originally for three Type 3 outdoor cultivation areas and we reduced it to two and, and that eliminated a lot of the tree removal necessary. And then we shifted some of the proposed mixed light cultivation area around to, to, to finally, we eliminated all of the, we reduced scope of the project to eliminate all tree removal. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, you could still speak.
I have significant concerns about this project. Two of them that will block me from approving it. One of them is the water sourcing and the other, as pointed out by a couple of citizens in a letter here regarding the aesthetics. If you look at the map at where this project is located, I just think it's incompatible with the surrounding uses aesthetically. This is really a high visibility area for the entire county. I mean, it's up on a ridge that is, can be seen from both arms of the lake, is drawing water from 100 feet below the lake level. I cannot in good conscience support it at this time.
Yeah, sure. That would be another concern that I would have as well about the well. Like if you couldn't find water within, you know, the first couple hundred feet, you had to go 660. I don't know if, because you can't use lake water for commercial cannabis. I'm just wondering how that would work in the eyes of, like the department, if that would be in violation of Article 27 in any way. I mean, it is drilled through the mountain, so I'm not sure how or if it would be considered lake water.
Yes, staff could look into that more. It was our understanding that it was coming from groundwater from within the ridge, but it was pointed out today that that well is deeper than the lake level. So it's, it's good to note that.
And because we have to make an, what do you call it?
Unanimous.
Unanimous decision. And the findings are not here, we would potentially move this project to a further date until we figure out those, those questions that were brought up.
Yeah, in my mind, the only motion that I can make is denial.
And what do you feel giving them more time would, would do?
Well, to figure out that water usage concern would be the main, the main thing that would either move this project forward or, or it be denied. If we move on today, it would, it would fail to pass. Therefore, giving you guys more time to figure that out would potentially give us the, the okay from where the water source is coming from and if it's considered lake water or, or groundwater, then we can have a better, potentially better outcome.
Nicole? I was simply going to suggest that if your commission feels that it's possible for you to reach an approval, but you're simply missing information that would assist you in making an informed decision that would allow you to make the findings that you have to make, then you can certainly move to continue the item and then give direction to staff as Commissioner Chavez just did, as far as what specifically you're looking for, what information you think is missing that would allow you to make that decision. You also have the option that if there is not information that could be provided here that would allow you to reach an approval, you could vote, you could make a motion to deny. And if, and if you do feel that you have enough information here, that there is appropriate information here for you to make the findings that are necessary, you can also make a motion to, to approve. I will also again remind you, as I'm sure you're, you're always aware, because there are just a, there are three of you, it's just a quorum, just barely, that a one to two vote would be a denial.
Yeah, and that's one of my concerns as well, not having the other inputs from the other commissioners to, to make the findings for this project. So I would move to continue it.
Staff or the applicant, how, how much time do you feel you would need to confirm whether you're pulling water from the lake or if it's groundwater? I know timeframes are kind of all over the place right now.
Yeah.
Is there any other reason why, why there wasn't any other water besides, hey, let's go 660 feet and pull from the lake? Or, and I'm not saying that it is pulled from the lake, but is there a way to, to verify that it's not?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to consult with a hydrogeologist on that, but I do know that sulfur bank ridge is a unique geologic feature and it would be different from the sedimentary geology under the lake.
Definitely.
But as far as making that, that determination at this moment, I have to, would have to dig into it. Yes, and, and consult an expert in that particular aspect. So that being said, I think, do you know when the first meeting is in, in July? We, we, could it even be continued to that one?
July 14th.
July 14th.
Thank you, Andrew. July 14th.
I think Jim is shaking his head. That, that agenda is full.
Oh, there's 11 items on that day.
I'd just like to point out that there is no I'd just like to point out that there is no, I don't see any way of addressing the aesthetic concerns as well.
I did want to speak to that because there is, the only way you can see the site is via helicopter. It's completely surrounded by the oak trees that we're preserving, and Andrew, he's been to the site and can attest to that.
Well, it sounds like in order for me to support the project, I would have to see that myself.
I understand.
So, at this point, I'm not willing to approve it. I'm not willing to continue it, but I think that if we take no action...
On behalf of the applicant, I would like to request a continuance until the next available planning commission meeting.
Nicole, can you speak to what happens if we take no action?
No, just to be clear, your commission would not make a motion at all. Can we take a break for a couple of minutes so that I can double-check and be sure I have an appropriate answer for that?
I'm showing a time of 10:31. We will resume at 5:36 after a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, 10:36. I don't even know what I said.